Hey man, welcome to On The Blockchain Podcast where we're not selling nothing, selling itself. Yo yo yo, what's going on people? Right back at you on the Blockchain Podcast, man. Got my guy Jahan Epps over here. We in the Crenshaw District, at Florence Fresh that is, you know what I'm saying, right here on Florence Avenue in the Crenshaw District. What up my brother?
How you doing Malik? Appreciate you having me out today, man.
Yes sir, yes sir. It's my pleasure, man. I'm happy to see all the wonderful things you got going on, you know what I'm saying? And um, I mean, just spread the word to the people, man. First and foremost, I want to salute you, you know what I mean? For even taking time and taking the effort, you know what I mean, and executing it, you know what I mean, to be able to run for a city council.
Yeah, man, thank you. Uh, it was, you know, it's a long journey, uh, but I'm, I'm ready for it and uh, we're gonna get it done.
Yeah. How's the reception been like? Is it, you know what I mean? Like, has it been warm, warm reception for you?
Yeah, the reception's been pretty great, man. Um, you know, I grew up here, been here a long time and we just want to see, uh, we want to see our own citizens grow up here and want to get involved in politics and that. So there's a lot of people that saw me grow up and they're excited to see that somebody from the neighborhood is taking an active role and wanting to make it better, you know?
That's right, brother. I'm proud of you, man. You know what I'm saying? Like I said, we here in the Crenshaw District. And um, so, listen man, let's take it back a little bit, man, because you got, you know what I mean, long ties, you know what I mean? Strong history, you know what I mean? Rich history within the Crenshaw District, man. Break it down for the people a little bit. Because you've been here since the LA riots and your family even before the LA riots. So this, it's like, come on, man. Listen up, people.
Yeah, no, you know what? Actually, I've been in LA a very long time. Um, my great grandparents migrated here from Louisiana. You know, the, the, my great south migration that everybody took. And so, um, we have, all of my family has been living in the district for a long period of time, our good portion of them. So my great grandparents' house, uh, is, which we still own to this day, bought in the 40s.
Sheesh.
Is um, inside the district. My grandparents, who are still alive, 87 and 94, their home is inside the district. My mother's home is inside the district. My home is inside the district. So you're talking about four generations, about 80 years of being inside the district, um, down to my four-year-old nephew. So when it comes to me wanting to make my community better, I'm worried about 94, my grandfather's 94, to my four-year-old nephew. So that's 90 years worth of age I have to account for and make sure that uh, life is good for everybody, you know?
That's beautiful. So everybody's accounted for, you know what I mean? Because that's a long lineage, you know what I mean? Especially in the same area, same district, you know what I mean? So it's like, you know, you got strong ties here and you know, I mean, it, it's, it's a good, it's a good story coming out of the district, you know what I mean? Because um, man, it's, it's a beautiful thing. It's like a rose out of the concrete, you know what I'm saying? Where it's like, not many people will choose to take that path. You understand what I'm saying, my brother? And because it's like, not that many will choose to take it, but not many will even have that thought, you know what I'm saying? Better yet, take a chance and then execute and apply, you know what I mean? So first and foremost, I want to salute you, you know what I mean? And um, yeah, man, what's your family think about this?
You know, uh, they, they, they're excited about it. They, you know, they, they think it's something positive, uh, that, you know, needs to be done. So I think it's like, again, it's just good to see somebody from around here. I don't know the ties of all of those politicians we have over the years. But always said, we have a couple of, uh, local schools around here, Crenshaw, Manuel Arts, Washington, Dorsey. I say, hey, after 60 years of school, we have 60 years of class presidents, 60 years of student body presidents, 60 years of treasurers. None of them ever decided to run, like, we just never, you know? So now we're just trying to encourage, hey, you know, take ownership, uh, you know, you can govern yourself. And I say you govern yourself, you can, we can have people from our community stay here, run, get into politics and make an active effort to make our community better.
Now, that's a fact, that's a fact, man. And it's crazy that, you know, we, we doing, we've been talking right here, right up the block, you know what I mean? From Nipsey's store, you know what I'm saying? And you know, that's, that's, um, you know, it's continuing the tradition, you know what I'm saying? The Crenshaw tradition that he was, you know what I mean, implementing into society, into just people mentality, you know what I mean? Of, you know, stay home and, and grow your home and, and grow it out and build it out, should I say?
Yeah, uh, you know, shots to Nip, man. It was a good guy. Glad I was blessed to have the, uh, you know, the ability to cross paths with him. We're only two years apart, so we came up in the same area at the same time, um, and you know, seeing him when he was just hanging out selling CDs at the gas station, you know, because that's where they came from, you know, my, not to date myself and my age, but you know, that's when everybody was selling the bootleg CD.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, man.
So you go to the gas station and he'd be right here at Slauson in Crenshaw, you know, for years, selling uh, CDs and stuff. And yes, you know, anybody that's been here for a long period of time, we want to see our community get better. Uh, unfortunately, if you 80's baby like me, LA has always kind of had the gang activity and the violence our whole lives. You know what I mean? And so, at some point, I would think we would all want that to change and we want, would want to know LA that is not attached to, you know, the violence and everything else. And I think that's what Nip was after. You know what I mean? And um, yeah, I would definitely want to encourage and try to finish that mission as much as possible and, you know, keep my brother's name alive, you know what I mean? Uh, the brother's name alive and, uh, and going and, and the movement more important.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The marathon continues, you know what I'm saying?
Continues, exactly, man.
That's beautiful. So that gets me to my next question. So like, what you think could be done about like gang intervention and all that good stuff?
Um, I think a lot could be done about gang intervention. Um, first and foremost, just uh, camaraderie. I think we need to facilitate more environments for us to, uh, you know, get together, uh, hang out. Because, you know, with gang violence, one of the things I noticed, and not even just with any type of violence, the first thing they do is, is misname it, you know, it's a terrorist or it's an insurgent.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it's a crab, or it's a slob, because nobody going to say, hey, I'm gonna go across town and shoot my black brother. Nobody want to say, I want to go across town and kill these innocent people. You have to make them something else in your mind.
Facts, facts.
You know what I mean? So if we allow for those names and those things to continue on and just that narrative to continue, again, nobody, hey, I'm gonna go shoot up a block full of black people. I'm gonna shoot like, that won't, it won't happen the same.
Sounds different, sounds different.
Yeah, it sounds different. So we gotta watch the narrative and give us, give uh, each other more of a chance to. A lot, a lot of us grew up playing like sports, after-school programs together and it curves the violence because you might know, you know, some of these people across town. And I would like to, and I commend big you and like what he's doing over at Crenshaw with the, uh, you know, the um, football program and Snoop and all of them with the program because it allows the kids to interact. And even if they're from different sides of town, it's like, hey, I've been knowing that guy for 10 years, 15 years, I played with football or basketball with him. It's less likely I'm gonna go over and do something violent to him or his family. So we just want to encourage more community-based. I think the, the stronger the community love, the less community violence.
Now, that's a fact, that's a fact. Yo, salute big you, my un, man. Listen, man, beautiful job you doing with the kid, with the children and with the young adults, you know what I'm saying? Shout out to my bro Dayon, you know what I'm saying? Getting it for the Chargers, the Ranger, what up, my bro? Like, yeah, man, listen, we changing the narrative here, you know what I mean? And we giving options, you know what I'm saying? Developing options, that is, you know what I'm saying? So that we could get the mentality of the youth moving forward, just to be a little bit more progressive, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely. So anybody that's doing anything in the community, not just him, but there's other people, Bear Claw, of course, and just.
Bear Claw, what up?
You know, yeah, it's a lot of people out here. I heard Skip and uh, just a lot of people that's around in this district that are doing things to uh, try to improve. And we want to, we want to uh, give them more resources and help that. We don't want to demonize them or make them out to be bad guys because they got past in history. Everybody.
Everybody got history.
Something, right? And we want to be able to change that. So why would we want to demonize anybody that's out here trying to make a change and change for the better? The focus should be on working with those people because who's going to suffer from all of this? We're not going to suffer, it's the kids.
That's right, that's right. The new generation.
The new generation. Um, I was blessed to uh, come across uh, Little Quincy Junior and I don't know if you, followers know who he is, but I, I had the blessing to know him. I had the blessing to actually uh, train him.
Oh shit, that's crazy.
I would help train him in basketball and sometimes go up to Crenshaw High or off-campus and um.
That was so sad, man.
Very sad. But those are the ones that's going to suffer if we keep these terrible narratives going about, you know, keeping this trouble up and keeping the violence up and who's tougher.
Yeah, man.
Like, it's time for all that stuff.
We losing.
Yeah, we losing, yeah, you know, that's, we losing. The casualties are not, you know, the older folks, it's the young kids that end up being the casualties.
Right, right, right. And it's crazy because, you know, as you get older, you learn this, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, it's not until a lot of us got older, you know, we had to bump our head the hard way sometime. And but it's like, once you reach a certain age, you know what I'm saying, you get to really start reflecting and looking back. And it's like, like we was talking about earlier, you know what I'm saying? Like, why have to get to that point to be able to learn your lesson? You know what I mean? Especially the younger crew, from people like my, like myself or yourself, that have bumped our heads and that we could steer you in the right direction without you having to even go through any of those type of, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, why would we want to send any of our kids to that heartbreak? You know what I mean? I was always trained, my father used to always say, you want the next generation to do better than the last.
Hello, hello, hello.
So if, if we have the ability to have you guys skip over a lot of the mistakes that we made, we want that to happen, you know? And furthermore, even now with the work I'm doing at, at Crenshaw, we have three uh, public, we have three schools around here. Uh, View Park, which is ISF, Lock High, which is partially greened out, which is like a charter program. Uh, Crenshaw is the only uh, public school that we still have in the district that is solely public. And I've been working up there because they have a population of kids who have not been on course to graduate, this, that and the third. So if it's, let's say 60 of them, seven months from now when school is out, where are those 60 kids gonna go?
Aw, man.
Right? They're gonna, you know, some of them be hanging around here, some of them have minimum wage jobs where they won't be able to afford, you know, a place to stay or anything like that. So, and then you'll have a population of them that won't have nothing better to do but to get into trouble.
That's a fact.
And they'll be our issue in less than a year, you know what I mean?
Then we gonna be talking about it then, like, instead of, you know what I mean, nipping the bud in the problem, I mean, nipping the bud, the bud in the problem, uh, the problem in the bud, excuse me, and beforehand, you know what I'm saying? And be, you know what I'm saying? Uh, like, we have to be proactive, you know what I'm saying? Instead of just on the back end.
Exactly. So we're, we're up at there now, for example, we're trying to get those kids now, because seven months ain't that far, you know? And we've all come straight out of high school, some of us probably arrogant, I know I was thinking, I'm gonna have it all worked out.
Yeah, come on, man.
Something gonna drop into my lap, but things don't drop into your lap. And if you don't, uh, if you fail to plan and you plan to fail. So we want to make sure we have a plan for all of the seniors. Even if they don't go to college, what are you doing? Do I need to hook you up with an internship?
Right, right.
You know, do I need to have you somewhere? So day one, once school is out, the first, you know what you're doing that day and it's not hanging on the corner, you know what I mean?
Ahead of time, you know, because, because you know, that's, that's one thing that we gotta start doing in the hood and the communities, you know what I mean? In the cities, you know what I mean? Planning ahead, you know what I'm saying? We all, we always in the moment and we, you know, always, you know, what's the quick dollar? But like, we gotta, we gotta start planning ahead more. And we have to start um, strategizing, you know what I'm saying? Game planning, you know what I'm saying? For our future, you know what I'm saying? Because that's key. And then it just goes back to what you were just saying, the kids, they need them opportunities, you know what I'm saying? Because, yeah, we, we young, arrogant, you think you got it made, you got all the girls in school, you know what I'm saying? Or whatever it may be, like, you know, so you think, oh man, this is going to just go exactly how I want it to go in life, like, and it's like, like, life happens, no, it don't happen like that. It's gonna throw you a curveball in the skirt, like, so you gotta be able to, to navigate, but you gotta have some good mentors, you know what I'm saying? You gotta be able to have some good, um, some, some good programs to be involved in that you getting these opportunities, you know what I mean? So that you could do, you could look, think and look outside of your own community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, definitely gotta have some programs and the resources have to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta make sure that our after-school programming is there and all of those other things are in place. So, you know, they have a direction and they have guidance and they don't just feel like, you know, they're on their own and they, you know, as they step out into the world, you know how they say, wait till, wait till you get a load of me, you know, like? So yeah, um, definitely working to close the gaps on a lot of those things and uh, you know, as much as we can.
Now, that's good, that's good, man. So you think, um, what do you think about like, just bringing some like tech programs and stuff into the communities? To be able to try to teach the kids about, you know, just different things like coding, some of these AI tools, how to get on top of it, ahead of them?
Tech is the wave of the future. And um, I've, you know, anything, you want to be ahead of technology, not behind it. Generally, societies that are, are uh, thriving are the ones that are up on technology. I've never seen a society be topping technology and behind in the world. And then those two things don't go together, right?
You see what these governments fighting for, like the technology.
Absolutely. And so whether it's, you know, we going back to the, to the Romans and how they build their chariots or whatever else, technology is always going to be able to put, you know, people in, in position to be able to win. So we don't want to be left out of those conversations. We don't want to be left out of that skillset. And so we definitely uh, need to make sure that those programs are around and being offered. And I have been able to come across certain uh, groups like South LA Robotics.
Oh yeah, yeah. Shout out to South LA Robotics, man. Yeah, we'll be at y'all real soon.
Uh, Teach2Reach and a couple of these other uh, programs around that currently, right now, uh, teach kids how to do coding and programming. Techlemert is another one. They've been having that every year. So there, there are people that are making a concerted effort to make sure that it's offered here. We just have to make sure that, that information is getting to the people that, that need it, the kids. And that they are actually signing up for these things. And that maybe we um, have to come together, fundraise, create a budget for it. Because when any service is going on, we have to remember, this is all, it all said and done, it's coming out of somebody's pocket. And they could all use support and resources. And until we are, I'm in a position to get it, government resources, sometimes we have to be prepared to support and get these things going ourselves.
Yeah, man. Listen, man, we gotta support each other, you know, we gotta support one another's initiatives, goals, you know what I'm saying? The mission, especially when they align, you know what I mean? It's like-minded individuals. Because, listen here, man, we gonna go out, we gonna go, whatever our vices, we gonna go spend on that, you know? We gonna go get fly, get drippy, you know, we gonna go spend on a nice meal, you know what I'm saying? Or whatever it may be. So it's like, we have to start using that same philosophy when it comes to coming together. And actually, that's crazy, man, because see, we in establishment right here, where y'all see shit looking nice and pretty. And um, yeah, man, like, you know, it was a team effort to get it like this, you know what I'm saying? My guy Jahan, like, he led the way and um, it made it happen, you know what I'm saying? So this is, this right here, this, this establishment we in right here, is proof and a put in that, listen, come together, coming together, making dream work, teamwork or dream work is what it's about, you know what I'm saying? And community. Because with the community involved, the right people, everyone plays a part and that everyone is able to reap the rewards.
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, this space is a perfect example of what uh, we can accomplish on our own without outside help or interference. I mean, of course, we want those resources, but yeah, we started a, an investment group and the, the idea was to own more businesses in the same area that we live, so we can recycle uh, dollars amongst ourselves. So we got a, as you know, we got a bunch of people together, potential investors slash owners, asked them to put in a certain amount of money each month. Uh, we came up with a certain amount of, of money each month, a certain amount of money we wanted to make each year. And we were going to use those funds to put uh, businesses in the neighborhood. And the first one we chose was a vegan health store, food store. Why? Because we don't have one around here, you know? We don't want another liquor store, we don't need necessarily another uh, hair salon. But what we do need is access to healthy food options and things of the sort. So it's just an example of what community can do when they come together. And another reason, I know you asked earlier, you know, what made me decide to run or get into this race?
Yeah, yeah, man.
As you know, I was already doing programs like this and I, I figured that my reach, my impact, the speed with I could, which I could move could be more, I could be more effective if I had that government position behind me rather than trying to do everything at a grassroots, ground level, you know?
Yeah, that's smart, man, yeah.
So yeah, I went ahead and, you know, uh, took a chance, threw my hat in the race. And um, you know, you gonna see me out here, you guys, and all my folks that's in LA, specifically in the district, pounding the pavement, leaving flyers on your door. We got a lot of cleanups going on. We gonna be doing stuff around the neighborhood to let you know that we're here and that we want to see things get better. So uh, by all means, if you want to volunteer or want to help, you mind if I shout out my website?
Come on, please do, man.
Website is uh, www.j.jeeps, j-e-p-p-s-2024.com. And my email is Jahan, J-A-H-A-N, Epps, E-P-P-S, district, the number eight, at gmail dot com. You guys can reach out to me on any of those. And my social media, uh, follow me on uh, Instagram, j.jeeps, uh, 2024, j.jeeps, 2024.
Come on, man. Make sure y'all go out there, go vote and support my guy. So when, when can they go out and vote?
The election is March 5th, uh, 2024. So yep, you're, you're gonna see us a lot because it's coming up in, you know, three and a half months, basically.
Come on, man. Save that date, guys and girls. March 5th, 2024, that's an important date, you know what I mean? Because we gotta stop talking about it, we gotta be about it, we gotta walk the walk, you know what I'm saying? Because we got opportunity to put people in place, put people in position, put people in seat, you know what I mean? And why wouldn't we, you know what I'm saying? When we always complaining all the time or talking about what we don't have or what we can't get, right? So let's just start somewhere. Let's put that first foot forward, guys and girls, and let's make sure that um, we do our due diligence, you know what I'm saying? Support my bro, you know what I mean, for the win. March 5th, 2024, it's coming up real soon, you know? And um, and, and just show love to the people because we need the right people in place, you know? Like, a lot of the times in these markets and these industries, you know, you have people that represent our culture, um, that's not from our culture, of our culture. And they're not really concerned with our culture and our people, right? You know what I mean? And, and our, and our, the, the betterment of our people, you know what I mean? The future of our people. So it's like, let's, let's make sure, like, you know what I mean? Whether it's politics, my guy Jahan, whether it's tech with brothers like myself, whatever, whatever space or market it is, like, let's make sure that we get the right people in position so that we don't got to, we don't have to keep complaining.
Exactly. You know, we can, we have the ability to do a certain amount ourselves. And let's make sure before we make a complaint that we're doing everything that we could possibly do, um, you know? Because that, that, that's energy better spent, you know? Why, why would I waste time complaining when I can waste time? Not waste time, but spend time.
Spend time, yeah.
Making an effect or having the impact that I want to have, you know?
Action, 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 man, that's it. And so I want to take it back a little bit because there, man, so how was it in the dis, well, in the whole South Central, but in the district specifically, how was it during the LA riots back then, man?
You know what? The LA riots were, were crazy. Um, you know, I was about nine years old when it happened and it happened down the street, actually down the street from where we are now. We could actually walk to the intersection of Florence and Normandy where the riots started. And so, um, you know, it was very crazy. It was a wild scenario. I just remember them, a, a lot of stuff was on fire, you know? As we, I don't care anywhere you drive, you're seeing people uh, running down the street, looting was at an all-time high. Either I was seeing people taking off to go loot or pulling back up to the house, unloading and going out for round two. And um, you know, you never want people to feel so desperate that that's what they feel they have to do to get their equitable share from society.
Facts, that's a fact.
And that's what really was a sign of. They didn't feel like they got their equitable share of society. And so they chose to take it by force. But even when I'm coming around to what I'm doing now, we're trying to handle it another way.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not let it get to that boil over and point to where everything's on fire around here and there's a barricade and the police don't want to come in and we're not letting them in and people can't come out, you know? So it was just, it was a wild scenario, helicopters, news cameras, I mean, just as, just as crazy as you can imagine. I mean, I don't even know how to put it into any other words, but just as crazy as you can imagine.
Listen, we gonna make sure that, you know, let's do our best and our due diligence, make sure it don't get back to that tipping point, to that boiling point in any city, you know what I mean? Because moving forward, you know, we, we got a lot of different tools and access and knowledge and shit that we could um, that we can incorporate in our everyday life, you know what I'm saying? Come together and collaborate to, to, to fight that, man.
And that's a good point that you make. You said a tip and a boiling point, you know, if we look at the cause of the riot, it was because this part of town or society, or, or maybe black folks in general, didn't feel like the political, or the judicial system was working for them, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so that was the cause. Like, we didn't feel like we were getting our just due in this area. And, you know, it could, same thing could happen politically or anything. So we don't want to wait. We want to get our equity now. And we want to step up and put people in the position that can help us to facilitate and, and, you know, have our voices be heard. So it doesn't reach that boiling over point where we feel like there's nothing left to do but go riot, you know?
That's it, yeah, man. That's, that's crazy. Because yeah, that's the last thing that we want moving forward, you know what I'm saying? Like, we gotta bring the people together because at the end of the day, that, that didn't serve us any good, you know what I'm saying? And it's like, they, it keeps us in that perpetual like cycle where we just keep chasing our tail, so to speak, you know what I mean? So it's like, you know what I mean? Like, we, we tired, man. Like, we tired of this shit, man. Like, we want better, we want to do better, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, it just, it's about the right people, like-minded people coming together and being able to support initiative that's going, that's going to change it. Because like, aren't y'all tired too, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you know, we, I mean, you know, of course, as a kid, I probably enjoyed it a little more.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
I gotta get, stay home from school for a week and a half or so, you know? Nothing was going in and going out, you know, you know, cereal all day, that kind of stuff. But real, reality-wise, it's like, uh, it wasn't good for us in, in the whole as a society. There was some good and some bad. But, you know, I would say the bad probably outweighed the good because there was a whole rebuilding process that had to go on. A lot of businesses that were here that got burned down never came back.
Never came back, yeah, yeah.
So it just, you know, we still have empty lots and empty corners and stuff like that from businesses that just, the business, or sometimes the business that replaced it wasn't nearly the quality of the business that was there before. So, yeah, we don't want to get to that again, you know?
Because we gotta learn how to keep the mon, well, we, we gotta, we gotta learn how to keep the money in our community. But we have to be in more control of the money and the cash flow and the, and economy of the community as well, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, however we can establish ourself, you know what I mean? Whether it's a store, whether it's a service somewhere in that area, to where like, we reaping the benefits, you know what I mean? Rather than outsiders coming in the community and just making money off of us.
And that's what happens a lot, especially around here. I, I say all the time, you'll see an empty lot on the corner. That lot will be empty for 10 years, old gas station, something. We'll drive past it, drive past it. Nobody's paying any attention to it. Nobody wants to buy it, nobody wants to invest in it. Then they'll go put a Jack in the Box there and as soon as that Jack in the Box is lit up, it's a line around the corner and everybody, oh, we don't got no business over here. Hey, that lot sat there for 10 years. And nobody touched it, nobody was bothered with it, nobody even complained until the Jack in the Box got there.
I'm telling you, man.
We have to not only do those things, but we have to be willing to uh, take those leaps of faith. And then we have to make it a priority to support each other. And I'm not talking about uh, black, white, Hispanic. I'm talking about the district as a community, all races. We have to make it a concerted effort to support each other so people feel like this is a valuable place to put a business, right?
Exactly, yeah.
If I was to put a business on in the middle of Melrose and I'm a clothing store or something like that, I feel good about that.
Right, right, right.
People come to shop here. If I was to put a business in the middle of the Grove, great, you know?
That's loose.
Imagine what I have. But we gotta feel just as comfortable that if we put a business brick and mortar here, it's going to be supported the same. And um, so we gotta give those resources and we gotta build that comfortability and, and, and encourage that amongst our community to recycle dollars here. So people will feel much more comfortable in putting quality businesses here.
That's, that's a fact, man. I, man, I second that, I second that. Like, yeah, as far as circling dollars in the community, like, what is it? Like, damn, let me see, like, uh, how could I say this, man? Like, um, what, what is it about ourself as, as, you know, a race that, that makes us not want to take advantage of that lot that we'll drive by for 10 years, right? But as soon as someone outside in front of the community comes in, that doesn't have any care, concern for the community and, and obviously has the money and the funds to do it, you know, builds that establishment there and people, and we come running to it, right? Like, like, what is that about us? Like, how can we change that, man?
Um, I think first and foremost, it's uh, comfortability, it's a culture change. And I, I don't want to put it all on us. I'm also, well, I do, but I don't. What I'm saying is that, let's say like Jack in the Box, they have, you can't get around certain business principles. Jack in the Box has branding, right? They've already branded themselves. And so that is their comfortability to put a business, or McDonald's to put a business down anywhere. McDonald's will go set a business in the middle of any country.
Anywhere, yeah.
Because the branding is there, the marketing is there. We don't market as much as we could or should. You know, I mean, you might see a commercial for Jones' foot rub and barbecue and that'd go viral and we laugh, but we all know it, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We have to put that same time and energy into marketing. And then we have to uh, put that same priority into supporting the businesses that are around. I think once we uh, work on building brands, uh, the marketing and, and, and getting the general community to support their own and just support the community, then the rest of, a lot of that other stuff will, will pick up, you know?
Okay, yeah, yeah. No, I like that, I like that, man. Because, you know, the mentality is everything and, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta just take ourselves from being that consumer, you know what I mean, to the seller. And ment, mental-wise, mentality-wise, because, you know, we're having many trillion dollars it is we spend a fucking year, trillions a year. Like, you know, do, I don't even know how many black businesses make a tr, like, uh, uh, you know, a trillion or a billion to be able to add to that, you know what I'm saying? That number. But like, we spending uh, trillions a year. So how can we take that mentality or philosophy or however we, because, I mean, we in LA right now, I'm from New York. This is from LA to New York, bro. This is not no, this is not no Cali shit, this is not no New York shit. This is, this is everywhere, this is nationwide, like, you know what I mean? Every city hood, like, inner city, whatever you want to call a community, like? So like, how do we readjust our mindset, you know what I mean? To be able to like, be like, damn, hold on, you know what? We driving past this lot every fucking day, man. This is our community. We do, we should believe in ourself. Like, how, why, why shouldn't we get funding to start something in that lot?
Well, I would say funding is a, is a big issue.
Yeah, 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 I know that.
I would love to, um, you know, as far as the banks that are in the district, um, I would like to go out on a limb and maybe hold them accountable to see how many people they're actually lending to in that same district.
Facts.
I know there's a bank, you know, down here on the corner. I know there's a couple of ba, you know, with these banks, I'm sure that you're getting most of your deposits. Let's say the banks on Crenshaw, there's a, there's a Bank of America on Crenshaw, there's a Wells Fargo on Crenshaw, there's a US Bank on Crenshaw. I would bet my bottom dollar that more than half of their deposits come from the community.
Right, of course, of course.
Now, how many home loans and how many business loans are they giving out to communities? So they basically taking our money and investing it elsewhere?
Come on now.
And that, that is, that is where I would kind of start with accountability. Because it's not a lot, when you want to do a new project, there's only two ways to pay for it. And that's straight out of pocket or credit.
Right, right, right.
Credit is financed and go hand in hand. So for, for us that don't have half a million dollars to buy a house or for us that don't have, you know, a hundred thousand dollars sitting in our back pocket to start a new business, our only other option is funding. And if we cannot get funding and finances from the banks that are, well, down the street from us taking our money, then where are we supposed to get it from?
Exactly, yeah.
And then we need to stop giving them our money.
Yeah, hello.
Hold them accountable to lending some of it back to us under the right terms.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree, man. Because, you know, it has to, it has to flow, you know what I mean? Like, if we're gonna be spending that much, then we should be reaping rewards that, that, that much, you know what I mean? And not just individually, collectively, you know what I'm saying? And um, yeah, man, like, let's, let's try to, let's turn these tables, man.
Yeah, definitely want to turn these. Yeah, definitely wanna turn these tables, so, you know, like, again, that's why I appreciate you guys, I appreciate the interview, I appreciate the time, because it gives me a chance to get my name and everything out there and, um, even more so. And, um, yes, it is about starting to take steps to make that positive change and not waiting on anybody, not sitting back and complaining. You know, just like you, I'm throwing myself into, to the fire personally. So before I, you know, point a finger at anybody else or talk about what anybody else should be doing, you know, like I said, if you point one finger back at, at somebody else, you got four, uh, three or four pointing back at yourself. So, before I go look at any other group or entity to worry about what they're doing, I look and see what I can do first. And this is, it's a big step, but it's what I can do to try to help.
Nah, I believe, man, I, I know this is my brother here, and I'm not just saying it cause my brother, but I believe he's the perfect man for the job, you know what I'm saying? He, he cares about the people. And, um, before we get out of here, like, um, for the viewers and the listeners, what's, um, like, what, what's some advice you would say for the, for the young, young boys and girls, uh, like, coming up out there in, in the community, in different communities?
You know what? I know it's gonna be hard and I know, you know, young kids, if we feel like we know everything coming up. But find you some good mentors, find you some people that you trust and can like listen to and, and let them save you some time. You know, like, like, literally, let them save you some time, let them save you some heartache. Even like what we were talking about before, some of the ways we bumped our heads, or even using, not to go back to, you know, Dayon Henley and stuff, for example. Straight to college, straight to the NFL, no, no head bump needed, you know what I mean?
Right, right, no head bump needed, right, yeah.
You know, it's like, you know, we don't, everybody doesn't have to, and I can name a couple of other kids, uh, one of his, Nigel, you know? Same type of kid, Crenshaw High School, football.
Right.
UCLA graduated, maybe he didn't go into sports, but now he's sports management, stuff like that. So we have a lot of successful kids that are coming out of here. We just need to, you know, facilitate and give that protective environment for them to be able to do it without the head bumps that are unnecessary.
Yeah, man, without the head bumps, you know what I mean, just opportunities and, and, and options, you know what I'm saying? And, and be good, you know what I mean? And, and that, that, that's key, man, and I'm, I'm glad my brother here, he's providing the access and the knowledge for the people, you know what I mean? And, um, yeah, man, go tap in with him, um, once again, get him your social media before we get out of here.
Yep, J dot E P S, uh, twenty twenty four, uh, J dot E P P S, uh, twenty twenty four. And I'm gonna give a shout out to Dayon Henley and Nigel Lewis, since I mentioned you guys in this, you know, podcast. Shout out for being a good example of what, you know, you can do and what the community can bring up without, uh, you know, any, any shortcomings along the way.
That's a fact, man, Nigel, Dayon, what up, man, salute to y'all brothers, y'all did it the right way, listen.